Officially, I'll open this board meeting for the Cordova Wreckin Park District Board of Directors on April 16th, 2025.
Members of the public can view the meeting live on YouTube and the link is posted on the agenda. Members of the public are hereby notified that meetings of the Board of Directors are recorded and requests for video recordings may be made to the clerk of the board. If a member of the public wishes to make a general public comment or a comment on a certain agenda item, please submit a blue speaker card to the clerk of the board and speaker cards are available on the black table. At this time, I'd like to welcome up community member Toriana Trapet and after the pledge, General Manager Patrick Larkin will say a few words.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's how you do it.
You have to stand up there and I get to introduce you.
You can't do B.
Right, right, right up here.
You can come lean up against the dais.
Some people have even hung out and lounged on the dais, but we won't go that far. Alright, so this evening we have Toriana is a community advocate and current Mrs. USA Prime Division Four. She works as a mobile... Well, there you go. She's all decked out in her crown and her sash as well. She works as a mobile clinics operations manager for VSP Vision where she travels across the country organizing mobile clinics events that provide free eye exams and glasses to individuals in need. In her spare time, she proudly serves as Mrs. USA Prime Division Four. The prime pageant system emphasizes self-care and community service. Values Toriana champions through her platform, which encourages mothers, step, bonus moms, and mother figures to prioritize their own well-being. She believes strongly that the moms must remember to care for themselves as they cannot pour from an empty cup. Toriana is married to Leroy Trapet and is a proud mom to their son Alexander and bonus mom to Jaden. Toriana and Alexander were on the cover of our last summer's recreation guide, if you remember. Remember this? Yeah? Alright. And so, we thank you for your support, your participation in parks and recreation programs and events and for you being such an amazing role model to the Rancho Cordova community. So, thank you and it's a pleasure having you here this evening.
Thank you so much.
So, we're gonna do a photo if you wouldn't mind, so we'll have the board come up and we'll do a photo with the Trapet family.
He should be in commercials.
I know. He probably will be.
Okay.
What a nice way to start.
So, we're at the local?
Standing action item.
What did it say, roll call? Standing action item.
Item two, standing action item, AB 2449 request. This is the portion of the meeting where we deal with any requests to join remotely through AB 2449. We receive no requests under the emergency cause provisions and the list is no action taken.
Thank you very much. Take roll call, please.
Director Danzel?
Here.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Mattis?
Here.
Vice Chair Langen?
Here.
Chair Sloan?
Present.
Now, we can do B comments from the public.
Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. At this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comment.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item C, our consent calendar.
Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have eight items for your consideration and at this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comment.
Would anybody on the board like to pull any items on the consent calendar? No? No, sir. Then I'll take a motion if someone wants to give me one.
I move the Board of Directors approve consent calendars C1 through C8.
A motion by Vice Chair Langen.
I'll second it.
Second by Secretary Mattis. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
We have no presentations. We have no committee reports. We have no public hearings, but we do have a regular calendar and that brings us to G1.
Item G1, authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Employee Health, Dental, Life, Vision, Employee Assistance Program, EAP, and Long-Term Disability Plans effective July 1st, 2025. At this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? Seeing none, there's no public comment and I'll turn it over to Human Resource Manager, Andrea White.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Sloan and Board of Directors. This evening, we're bringing forth our benefit program for renewal for the park district full-time employees. This first staff report is for the medical, dental, vision, and long-term disability plans that we, including life insurance for our employees. We are requesting no changes to the plans that we're currently offering. They are very similar and only slightly different, just slightly out-of-pocket max for just a couple of the plans, but overall, they're exactly the same as what we currently offer to our employees. You'll see the fiscal impact. There is an increase this year and this is something that we were expecting. You may have heard it in the news that costs have gone up for benefits and so, for this year, we were quoted 13 and a half percent increase. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have anybody in the audience?
There's no public comment at this time.
Any board member want to make a public comment? No?
What's the average increase usually that you guys experience with?
Yeah, that's a good question. We, for several years, it was around six to eight percent. Last year, it was almost 10% and this year's 13 and a half.
Thank you.
Does this also increase the benefit too towards staff, employees, like with dental? Does it cover more or is it still the same?
No, it's exactly the same. I mean, we have a very good program. We have good benefits, including the dental plan, but we're keeping it exactly the same. We definitely aren't looking for more expensive benefits with the increased costs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Danny, anything?
Nope.
And all the, anybody want to give me a motion on this item?
Chair Sloan, I'll move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Employee Health, Dental, Life, Vision, Employee Assistance Program, EAP, Long-Term Disability Plans effective July 1st, 2025.
Thank you, Director Yearwood. That's a nice motion. Second, I have a, second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Well, that brings us to G2. I'm so excited.
Item G2, authorize the General Manager to allow an annual deposit of $2,100 for a single employee and $3,600 for employee plus spouse, child, family into a health savings account, HSA, for employees that select a high deductible health plan effective July 1st, 2025. And at this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to Manager White.
Thank you. So, this is again, something that we did last year. We put funds into a health savings account for employees who select a high deductible health benefit program. We have found that with our contribution and because the high deductible plan is so much less expensive than the regular co-pay plans, it's still a cost savings to the district and a lot of employees really enjoy this plan because these funds roll over year after year. So, it is a savings to us, it's a benefit to the employee. We did increase it slightly in 2023 because those co-pays, I'm sorry, not co-pays, but the deductibles inch up a little bit every year and we'd like to keep it the same for this year. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions on my board? No?
I just have one, so like if, for like with my situation, I got five kids. So, does it help an employee if they have more kids? Is there another option too for that?
You know, I would say, you know, a lot of people who utilize this plan, who get these funds into a health savings account are probably more like, are employees who are less likely to use the plan because those funds roll over year after year because they can use them for dental, for vision, for any kind of medically acceptable thing. If you have a lot of people on your plan, you're more likely to use it in having to pay into that deductible because there's a cost per person on your plan. And that's why we have options. We have not just this high deductible plan, which saves a little money, but we have regular co-pay plans for people who maybe use it a little bit more or have a larger family.
So, you say it's a savings plan?
Yeah, it's a health savings account.
So, if they don't use it, when they retire, they benefit from it?
They absolutely do. In fact, you can use health savings account funds to pay for Medicare premiums. And so, I've known of employees who've switched to this plan before they retire so they can have funds towards future medical costs. It does not go away for them until they use all of their funds.
Are they accruing interest too on the account if it's, if they roll over?
I believe they probably have a small, a very small amount of interest accruing in the account.
You think something? Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody want to give me a motion on this item? G2?
Chair Sloan, I'll move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to allow an amount, an annual deposit of $2,100 for a single employee and $3,600 for an employee plus spouse, children, family into a health savings account, HSA, for employees that select the high deductible health plan effective July 1st, 2025.
Thank you, Director Yearwood, for that motion.
You're welcome.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Danzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Well, here we are, G3. Can you believe it already?
Item G3, authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Flexible Spending Account, FSA, with Benefit Resource Inc., Bri or BRI for eligible employees effective July 1st, 2025. At this time, we receive no speaker comments, however, is there anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comments, then I'll turn it back over to Manager White.
Thank you again. Okay, so, this is the last component of our benefit program to bring forth to you. This approves a contract with BRI there due to administration for our Flexible Spending Account. This is a voluntary program we offer to our employees that they can donate or donate, they can voluntarily pay into to receive tax-free dollars towards co-payments and any other medical-related expense that's approved by the IRS. And we have quite a few employees who actually contribute to this because, as you know, there are a lot of things, especially like dental and vision, that are not covered completely by your medical benefits. So, by having this program, employees can put funds in, they know that it's a use-it-or-lose-it program, however, $660 rolls over every year and we educate employees if they have quite a few, quite a bit of money in there to make sure that they use those funds and it's been a very successful program. So, we'd like to move forward and offer this again.
Okay. Great. Anybody on the board want to make any comments about that? Alright, then who's gonna give me the motion this time?
I'm of the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Flexible Spending Account, FSA, with Benefit Resources Inc., BRI, for eligible employees effective July 1st, 2025.
I have a motion on G3 from Director Danzel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a tie. Who was that?
Give it to the Vice Chair.
Was it Mattis?
No, I was gonna say.
Who was it? You? Jesus, am I just taking?
Vice Chair.
I'm gonna take Vice Chair Danny Langen, he was second on that one. Roll call vote.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Mattis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Langen?
Aye.
Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, we're already at H, Board of Director Items. Can you believe it? Beat Danzel's record.
Not happening.
Item H1A, nominate a district representative to run for election to the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts, CARPD, Board of Directors, Director-at-Large, or Administrator Representative, and adopt Resolution 24/25-28 supporting the nomination and service on the board if elected. At this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comments, so I'll just highlight a few things in the staff report. So, in your packet is the 2025 Slate of Board Officers for the CARPD Board. In addition to those listed, member districts such as CRPD may also nominate a board member or general manager to be placed on the ballot and the election is scheduled to take place on May 22nd, 2025 at the CARPD Annual Conference in San Diego. If the board desires to vote on a nomination, the nominee would need to submit a letter of interest and qualifications, no longer than one page, to me by Monday, May 5th. And I'll turn it back over to Chair Sloan.
Thank you, Shelby. I have a question and maybe Brian can help me with this. Is there anything in the policies for CARPD about having so many directors?
You can only have, you can only have two directors or a director and a general manager on and currently, you and I both sit as those two.
So, with that, it probably puts us at?
The back.
The back already?
It does, but that doesn't mean somebody can't decide to try and, well, you're not up though and neither am I, so yeah, at this point, it would be a moot point.
Okay.
So, it's either of us or I.
So, no action taken on this item? Okay. Wait, the vote on that?
Just action.
Alright, no action on, maybe next year, guys. You run again.
Do we have option for recall?
Recall? I like that movie though. That brings us to, let's see, H2, Board Member Reports.
Item H2A is the Training Report. This month, there was no training to report and item H2B is the Community Activities Report. At this time, we receive no speaker cards, however, is anyone who'd like to make a public comment? And seeing none, there's no public comment.
I mean, I noticed that a lot of our, my fellow directors had nothing to report, but maybe they got something that they forgot about. Brian, do you have anything to report?
I did attend hopping and hunting at Hagan. Totally forgot that it fell on that weekend and not, I mean, I was there, but I forgot to put it on my report, but other than that, staff did their great, great job as they always do. More and more kids and every, 99.9% of the people I spoke to had a great time.
Great, thank you. Director Yearwood, how about you?
What was that percentage?
99.9%.
That I spoke to. Yeah, I was standing next to that one lady.
Okay.
I too attended hopping and hunting at Hagan. There was a lot of hopping, a lot of hunting. It was a, again, it's a well-attended event, it really draws the crowds. Staff did a great job as usual. Cupcake was out, you know, I love cupcake, so, got nice pictures too, if anybody wants to see them. But anyways, that's all I got.
Thank you. Secretary Mattis?
No.
Anything? Nothing? Nothing popped up?
No, I mean, I went to, last Saturday, I didn't do ours, but I went to Orangevale Parks, they had a Park Day thing, so I took the kids there to kind of see that. So, it was good to kind of see a different district.
Yeah, what they do.
It wasn't an Easter egg hunt, but it was more of like a celebration. I think it was a launch of like their summer catalog, so they had sign-ups and everything there. So, I was able to get a catalog and kind of go through it and it was interesting and, but it was just nice to kind of just see a different, a different district, you know, to kind of see out there and I had my shirt on, so it was kind of nice to go around there.
You can't do off research with your brand, dude.
Oh.
Why's Chair Langen, what about you? You did a lot, didn't you?
I did, if you include all the times I was at Rosemont Community Park for baseball, Little League.
Every time.
Yeah, about four or five times a week right now, so. But I'll tell you this, with being there, the park always looks really well and those tennis courts, pickleball, basketball, I mean, I, maybe one time that I was there, was there not someone on them, so I mean, they're used just all the time, so it's awesome.
I thought I, I thought I heard something in the wings, they had some type of a tournament there that was played there. I don't know if you guys probably don't know about it, but they probably had someone organize their own little tournament there. I heard this from someone who lives in Mayfair. I don't know, they called it?
They're crocked out on that.
Oh, I know. Well, they probably just had like, you know, get some people involved and have, you know, two games going, game going at one time and they made their own bracket and that's great. Something was fantastic. With that, I'm gonna start mine because I have a little bit longer of a list and I did attend the, with also Director Yearwood, the, on March 22nd, the Cordova Grill Softball celebrated their 60th anniversary. And I think Michael and Brian are both sponsors of teams out there.
We are.
And it was nice. It was a nice event, the weather was just perfect. So, get out there and support the organization at Rod's Snack Bar, it's got the best snack bar in the, in the region, I'm telling you. I'm not kidding. Okay, then on March 22nd, I attended the Breckin Steering Committee. I want to just, if you wanted to come by, this, this Saturday on the 19th, where she's gonna be stuffing eggs pretty soon, they're gonna have our little egg hunt in our little park there, so. Last year, it rained on our little egg hunt and we still had about 30 people out there, 30 kids. And now, on, on April 8th, I was proud to go out to the Community Outreach Meeting. It's not. The Community Outreach Meeting at White Rock Park concerning the dog park design development. We had a handful of people out there, would have been nice to have more, but maybe it was the time of day, who knows, you know, it was like 5:30 or 5:00 or something.
5:30.
But I know some of the older people have a hard time getting, you know, walking there, so, but I, the public were very responsive to the plans and some people were kind of giving their concerns about the Hagan Dog Park and so we could, you know, learn from those and so the new dog park we're gonna open up here will have even, even better. Everything we do becomes even better, right? So, if you all have a chance, maybe you guys can check out the boards or photographs that Shelby can send you of the design so far where it's at. On April 12th, it was hopping and hunting at Hagan and we, we had the mother, mother weather forecast was, oh God, it was perfect, it was a great event. It was probably one of the busiest, crowdedest hopping at Hagan I've ever seen because just, I mean, I got there right at, when it started and it was packed then. So, that means that people got there early and took advantage of the pancake breakfast and, and so, by the Quanys, Quaney Club. And I think they had like, I don't know, was it 8,000 eggs? How many eggs, do you know? You might know the number?
A lot.
A lot. There was a lot of eggs. There were so many eggs.
Too many to count.
There were so many eggs. And they had these golden ticket eggs, which was kind of cool too. And we had the water egg, in the, in the community pool, we had the floating eggs that you'd pick up. It was great. It was fantastic. In the little tot lot, it was, everyone loved it. And that same day, I ran from there, I didn't run, I actually got in my car and drove, to Rosemont Community Association. They have their second annual Easter egg hunt at Rosemont Community Park. I know for sure they had about 4,000 eggs, they said, and they had about 400 people that signed up, so, and they, and so, and kids were like, you know, coming away with 30 to 40 eggs, how much they could stuff in their shirts, there was plenty. And they also had some golden eggs too, the same thing, they had tickets that you would find and you could cash them in for prizes. They had vendors out there, they had free snow cones, they had a little petting area where there was a rabbit, a rabbit cage. What else they have? They had the Easter bunny on bicycle driving around and it was nice, very nice. They, it's a very successful, for the second year, boom, they, they're really doing a great thing out there. Park looked beautiful. And now, there's one more, April 15th, last night, I went to the It Takes a Lincoln Village Community Meeting and basically, we're still in search of, trying to figure out the, the year, the time that Lincoln Village was, was formed. They still haven't come up with that, but they're holding off on having any type of celebration because they've got a lot happening out of that park and, and I'll tell you, one that's, a good one that you guys want to keep on your calendars, on June 7th, they're gonna have art in the park at Lincoln Village and it's gonna be a pretty, last year was really fun. They had musical performances and they had painting demonstrations and you could, you know, buy art and it was really, really a cool thing. They even had some tastings of some local restaurants there. So, that's my report. Thank you. Where's that bring it to now?
Item I.
Training, community activities?
I.
The I's have it.
We're on the I, comments by staff.
Item I1, District Wide Monthly Progress Report for April 2025. At this time, we receive no speaker cards and seeing no public comments, I'll turn it over to General Manager Patrick Larkin.
Thank you, Shelby. Alright, some highlights from the past month. I am honored to have been appointed to the Board of Directors for the United Cerebral Palsy Sacramento and Northern California. We have a very excellent program that we're hosting in partnership with them at the Cordova Golf Course. We do golf clinics for their clients and so, with that, we're looking to expand our partnership with UCP and offer more services for people of all abilities, so I'm really excited about that new opportunity for myself as a person representing CRPD on that. Hosted a Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District PMRID Oversight Committee Meeting. It went very well. We talked about last year's accomplishments, we're talking about moving forward with a new nomination period for three of the seats are open at this time. The recruitment is out, we're encouraging current members to reapply for those positions. After the close date of the applications, the PMRID Oversight Committee Nomination Committee will be called for review of those applications and then a recommendation to the full board at the following meeting once that's done. So, thank you for, I believe, Secretary Mattis and Vice Chair Langen are on that committee. Attended the California Association of Recreation Park Districts, CARPD General Managers Round Table Meeting. There is a lot of discussion right now about the Quimby Park land laws associated with fees and so, in the packet, there is an opposition letter to legislation that's And so in the packet, there is an opposition letter to legislation that's being created challenging those and looking at them as a fee. In fact, it's a law. And so we have some good support from multiple agencies that are opposing that movement in legislation. And so we're at the table making sure that our voices are heard. I met with Congressman Ami Barra to discuss funding opportunities and support for the feasibility study for the Center of Property and the Mather Sports Center. I had the opportunity to meet with him down at the CSDA offices in downtown, invited by our Representative Dane Waddell. And it was great to share with him that opportunity. He's looking forward to a future site visit so he can see the property itself and get a visual of maybe how they can support us in the future with that. I also attended the White Rock Community Dog Park Outreach Meeting to obtain more feedback on the Dog Park design and location, all that good stuff from the residents. That was the second outreach effort that we've had. The first one was at the Party in the Park last year at White Rock Park. So this one was a little smaller. We had about seven folks that attended. And they gave us some good ideas to consider and some options for us to look at that, from there, we were going to have our consultant tweak the plan and it will be coming back to the Board for approval, I believe, May or June of this year, depending on how they can turn that around. Co-led the wit staff, the CRPD Class Module for Leadership Branch of Cordova. It was a great session this year. They have a great team of leaders that we're working with. We have Mark Haig, who is our, who is our Parks Supervisor, attending the class this year. Their project is a creating of seating areas at the Children's Science Museum down the street there. And so that's a really great project that they're working on and we're supporting them in that. Attended the Student Art Show at the MAC to support our preschool STEAM kids. The artists were there with their parents. Their art was displayed. Thank you for the staff, preschool staff, and we had some administrative staff also supporting our kids. It's a great event. The kids are super proud, the parents are even prouder, to have them have their art piece shown and displayed in the gallery there. So kudos to our kids in preschool. We had some recruitment efforts from some of the opportunities that were given. For Cordova High School had a career fair for recruitment of aquatics staff as well as year-round staff. And then also the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership offered a workshop attended by 50 students. The event covered resume building, financial planning, career in recreations, and guidance in applying for district positions. So good turnout. We're excited about that recruitment. We're doing really well so far, so good. We should be fully staffed hopefully soon for us to launch our new programming. In our Park Planning and Development, Man Love Park Walkway Replacement Project, we're expected to go out to bid for that project next month. And we should hopefully get that rolling soon and be expected to have that done hopefully by the end of summer for us to be able to have new pathways out there. We changed the dates for the ribbon cuttings for Rock Rose Park and Exploration Park. Rock Rose will be now June 14th at 10:00 a.m. and Exploration will be June 28th at 10:00 a.m. And we'll send you reminders about those when we get a little closer. One last thing, staff is working with the Rosemont Little League on some projects that they originally came in as volunteer projects. They submitted three volunteer projects for improvements at the farm field, installation of electronic scoreboard, and install of a batting cage. So CRPD staff are working with the Little League to bring the projects to completion, construction, status quo, heating proper, permitting, insurance, legal construction, contracts, and protocols. So we're excited to see if we can get that to completion at this point, so we thank them for bringing it this far so fast. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns.
Thank you. All right, over the Cordova Golf Course, we are thrilled to announce the addition of Will Robbins Golf to our menu of golf instructional programming. The WRG specializes in development of junior golfers through group coaching, golf camps, and tournament play. And they've been really successful in building this local program up at Empire Ranch and then approached us. And so now they're at the Cordova Golf Course and they started their first camp this week. I was out at the golf course today and there were several participants out there. So super proud of our staff again for continuing to try to, to grow the golf community here in, at the Cordova Recreation Park District. In Park Services, we have finished the Mather Sports Complex Modular Building, so the construction is completed. Now we are waiting to get some office furniture and then the Recreation and Park staff will move in by the end of the month. Heavy lift, so a huge thanks to Gary Atchison in Park Services as well as Terry in Park Planning for bringing this project to fruition. And then of course, Chase and his staff for finishing up and making it all pretty inside. So we're excited for that staff to be able to move in here soon. Park Services has also been busy replacing several pieces of equipment at various playgrounds throughout the district as part of our 24-25 Capital Improvement Plan. So heavy lift there as well. In Recreation, great news, we finally have indoor pickleball courts. They're not quite courts, but they are courts because they have lines. The lines are with a whole bunch of other lines. However, at the Mather Sports Center inside, we now have three pickleball courts. And so we're super excited to have that. Obviously, we know pickleball is growing in popularity. And so we plan on rolling out our first drop-in pickleball, May 1st. It's going to be Monday through Fridays from about 9:00 a.m. to noon. So we're going to start advertising for that. We needed the modular building to finish first before, because we would have driven our staff absolutely bonkers with the sound of pickleball. And so we got to get them out of the building and so once they're out of the building, we'll start. So we're hoping to get that started on May 1st. So excited for that. So thanks to all the staff that worked hard to get those pickleball lines down as well as staff who are going to program pickleball. We're going to start with drop-in and then we're going to see how popular it is and then do some programming from there. Youth Teen Programs and Sports. Our Winter/Spring Youth Sports Programs are in full swing. Our Junior NBA is currently underway, featuring 120 kids for their six-week season of basketball. And we also have our Pee-wee Soccer League with 40 young participants. So excited to get those programs going. And then in, at the Senior Center, on March 13th, we kicked off our Senior Arcade Program, bringing interactive and immersive gaming experience to our active adults and seniors. So we purchased some new virtual reality goggles and the participants started their journey at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center and then flew to their own hometowns, exploring familiar streets and landmarks with just a simple headset. So again, great job Chase and his staff for just being innovative and saying, hey, let's try something different. And the seniors absolutely love it. So they're having a blast and they're looking forward to their next, whatever it may be, virtual reality, so.
Didn't they have to buckle up their seatbelt to do that?
No, no. Well, some of them are sitting, but you can, yeah, you can stand or sit. So that is really cool to see. I'm excited for that. And then some bragging rights. So Chase Michelotti and myself and Mr. Goodell and Jack Rovain played in the CPRS Foundation Cup Golf Tournament and we took home the cup, champions. So we're super excited. It was a foggy, cold day, but we, we got through it and we won by several strokes too. We didn't just win, like we, we dominated, so.
Was it best ball?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
Best ball, but you have to use two drives, each golfer. We, yeah, it, yeah, there were some prizes along the way, but yeah, we as a team just, we did it. So we're excited. We've played in the tournament a couple of times and this is the first time that we've brought home the trophy. And so they're, they're engraving it now. It's a traveling trophy, but once the engraving is done, of course, we're going to grab it and we're going to display it right here for every board meeting, just so you can see that we are champions, so. We're excited.
We'll fill it with champagne in the background.
Right? Yeah, I like that. So congratulations to all of us for winning that tournament. Super excited. I've never played in that foggy weather though. It was really difficult. Like the first ball we hit, we had like no idea.
The fourth player, his name was Tiger something, what was it?
Yeah, Tiger Jack Rovain.
Every time, she's right down the center, right?
Well, I have a little bit of an advantage playing from the women's tees, but it was fun. We had a good time.
Oh, I see, I see.
All right, to the Board of Directors Special Event Invitation Page. The next big events are the Kids' Day in the Park, obviously hosted by the Cordova Community Council at Hagan Community Park, Saturday, April 26th, from 11:00 to 3:00. Same day, earlier that day, is the Earth Day Celebration and Arbor Day Celebration, hosted by the Rosemont Community Association and us, CRPD, at Rosemont Community Park. That's going to be 9:30 start for the Arbor Day Celebration and then starting at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. is going to be the Earth Day Celebration. So hopefully y'all can make it out for that. For the Senior Resource Fair at Lincoln Village Community Park, I'm sorry, there's a little typo there. It's going to be on Wednesday, April 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Then we have IFEST in Winds of the World, hosted by the Community, Cordova Community Council at the Village Green on May 10th, from 5:00 to 9:00. We go back to Lincoln Village Community Park for Community Yard Sale, Saturday, May 17th, from 8:00 to 2:00. And then our most popular event at the pool is the California Mermaid Convention, hosted by the Mermaid and Mom at the Cordova Community Pool, Saturday and Sunday, May 17th and 18th, from 7:00 to 4:00. And with that, that concludes my report. Happy Easter.
I think the Day of Services is in there too, isn't it?
It's May 17th.
Also, yeah, overlapping that. It's going to be a busy, busy day. Thank you for that report, your live report. So where does that bring us now to? Adjournment?
Informational.
Informational items, okay.
So Item J1 is our Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. This month, we have two letters, two articles, and two newsletters. And Item J2 is our CRPD Calendar for April and May. At this time, we've received no public comments and seeing none, there's no public comment. And just a note and reminder that the May meeting is on May 28th, 2025, which was rescheduled from May 21st earlier this year. And I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to our, my most favorite item on this agenda, Item K, which is adjournment. Thank you, so we can go have some more cake. See you guys on next regularly scheduled on May 28th at 6:30.